It said that boards are that there are possible benefits in governance merger, but that positive provocative relationships among the school districts do not exist. And I find this interesting in the context of what we just wrote earlier about in the idea of is it relationships or systems? So could you just speak about that because it is can these adult relationships getting in the way of what inevitably from the board would be actual benefits? So is there any move, and I know you're just joining, to try to move some of those relationships to systems for benefits of children?
Would you like, so candidly?
Candidly, it would be fine.
Candidly, it would be fine. Okay, so we have had fairly honest boards for a long time. And they're of different sizes, they're run in different ways, some simple, we have some very strong principles that work very well with their board in a very honest way. And there are boards that like the way it is and don't want it to change. There are other boards, Bradford Elementary Board that we're on has striving towards a more hands-on approach to governance. We want to be, drive our governance through vision, mission, and policy governance. We want to allow those people that are experts in education to be running our schools and not us community members who really don't have the time to dedicate to understand many things like toward development. There are other districts that have been very hands-on in their governance of the school. They have been during the school day, they've been there in a very hands-on fashion where that's a traditional model for what they consider to success or community-based schooling. And there's a real difference there. And there's no, in the structure that is the supervisor union where we're sharing our executive officer between districts that have this community-supported school system and other districts that has a leader-supported or education leader-supported school system where we're trying to reach them in the hands of those people. That superintendent is split between two visions and missions and it makes the governance of the greater supervisor union difficult. And that's where those contentious relationships would seem to fall.
Any questions? All right, so anything else that...
We have worked exhaustively on this for three years. We have been asked to do what we ask our students to do. We have been asked to solve a problem, to potentially look for a solution that's outside of our comfort zone. And we welcome that and know that we have really worked very hard and exhaustively these past three years. And we appreciate your time and your consideration today.
Thank you for your effort and time. We understand. Thanks. All right, so next which is Newbury coming up, so part of that. And so do we represent the team Newbury or did I? Oh, okay. Oh, is this one that you got an email for us?
No.
Oh, no, no. You wouldn't mind just introducing yourself for the record?
Good morning, I'm Oliver and I'm chair of the Newbury Board.
Danielle, Danielle 44 number. Emmy Houseman, Newbury member.
And then if you want to give us your information and then leave us some kind of questions, that would be great. Thanks.
We even practiced a couple of times.
Oh, good, all right.
We'll keep the ten minutes, I hope. On behalf of the Newbury School Board, I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about our alternative governance structure proposal. And according to the Act 46, R&amp;G Supervising Union was expanded on July 1st of this year to incorporate the existing Blue Mountain SU. The Secretary of Education has further proposed a unified Union School District by merging the Boards of Blue Mountain, Bradford Elementary, Oxbow High School, and Newbury Elementary. We firm and believe that this is in the educational interest of our students that Newbury Elementary, a pre-K through sixth grade school, remains governed by its independent school board within our newly expanded supervisory union. Here are seven key reasons. Number one, loss of flexibility and local responsiveness in educational program, programming, excuse me. Number two, precedent in granting school districts with circumstances similar to Newbury's independent status under the alternative governance structure. Number three, consequential financial implications for Newbury taxpayers, setting conditions for friction within the merged board. Number four, disruption of an extraordinarily stable and supportive existing relationship between the school and its community. Number five, limited gains from future collaboration because of effective collaboration in the past and new opportunities for future, for further collaboration under the just expanded supervisory union. Number six, anticipated savings through avoiding duplication in SU staffing that has just been put in place under the new SU. And number seven, the likelihood that a neighboring district's actions will cause the proposed merged district to fall well below the Act 46 goals with respect to compatibility and the number of students. Brief expanding on each of these items. Number one, like all schools, the Newbury Elementary sometimes needs a high degree of flexibility and responsiveness to address its unique circumstances. Among many possible examples, Newbury has recently had to address a cluster of students determined to disrupt the classroom activities by acting out. Most of these students do not require special education, but rather are dealing with social and emotional issues. In response, the local board, principal, and staff with full parental support have just established a separate multi-age classroom with an experienced teacher to work with this small group of students until they are participating productively in a regular classroom. We believe this kind of creative response to an immediate need would be far less likely with a merged board preoccupied with five school teams. Number two, we are aware that the other school districts with characteristics similar to Newbury's were not recommended for Act 46 consolidation. For instance, the secretary did not recommend the merger between Woodbury and Hardwood because it was not, and I quote, "not clear whether there is sufficient educational or fiscal benefits to do so while the other intertwined relationships continue to exist", end quote. Our Bradford-Newbury situation appears to mirror Hardwood and Woodbury, and that both will remain within the SU into the future. And both are surrounded by unlike structures, Walcott and Brainsborough and Thadford and Wexford. Most important, both are of a scale so small that fiscal and educational opportunities can most rarely be achieved through closer collaboration, cooperation within the SU without a unified board superstructure. Number three, Newbury taxpayers will be facing onerous increases in Newbury's, excuse me, onerous increases. Newbury's disciplined budgeting has resulted in the lowest cost per pupil at $12,910 and the lowest tax rate of $1.40 of the four towns in the village proposed to district. Under the proposed unified district, Newbury taxpayers would be asked to assume long-term liabilities disproportionate to their own modest school debt. In particular, Bradford's continuing $1,150,000 bond will contribute considerably more to the combined tax rate than Newbury's own $120,000 long-term debt which will be extinguished within four years. Even more important, BMU's teacher contract has the highest staff pay levels of the proposed district, and the other schools including Newbury will have to assume those levels. All these additional costs were voted on and are being expended by communities other than Newbury. And the facilities and the programming was not intended to benefit Newbury's students. The resulting tax bill for Newbury with little or no visible benefit would surely set up conditions for discord among the communities and their school boards, which have enjoyed cooperative relations for decades. The proposed merger, number four, the proposed merger would undermine the stability of the community-school relations in indirectly staffing, morale, and educational quality. Our current school board members have served for 22 years, 10 years, and three years respectively. Our principal with seven years of service has the longest tenure in the SU. Our town has voted down school budgets only once in the past four decades. Community support has been demonstrated time and time again through programs like Grow a Rope in which Home Guard days contribute produce to the school breakfast and lunch programs. We believe distancing the high local and often personal contact of the voters with the school endangers one of our school's strongest assets, enthusiastic community support. Number five, effective July 1st, the R&amp;G Supervising Union was expanded to include Blue Mountain School with a highly experienced but almost entirely new co-USU staff. The administration now consists of a new superintendent, assistant superintendent, financial manager, curriculum coordinator, and even a new receptionist. The team is demonstrably committed to fostering further collaboration. In fact, the new superintendent and financial manager have moved directly from BMU, thereby guaranteeing familiarity with the district's expansion and facilitating cooperation. We see few of any educational or financial benefits remaining from the proposed merger that cannot be achieved more directly through collaboration. Number six, the expanded OESU has already achieved significant savings, most notably through the elimination of duplicate expenses for the superintendent, the business manager, and other SU rulers. Additional financial efficiencies through the unified Union District are likely to be far less material. Number seven, yesterday in the advisory vote, the citizens of Blue Mountain Union District voted 443 to 183 to close its high school and offer school choice if a merger is forced upon the district. Given that overwhelming sentiment, we believe it probable that in the near future the proposed district will fail to meet a compatible configuration and minimum student numbers of Act 46. Without Blue Mountain School, Blue Mountain becomes a K-8 school, like our adjacent U-36 Union School, Wexford. This K-8 arrangement will be incompatible with the proposed unified district. Only 681 equalized students will comprise the proposed unified Union Districts, failing the Act 46 threshold. On behalf of our students, we respectfully submit that these reasons individually and particularly collectively are overwhelmingly for our proposed alternative governance structure, combining our newly expanded R&amp;G Supervising Union with the continuation of existing local school boards. And you very much bear the consideration.
All right, yes, Oliver.
So my question for the board and also perhaps for the secretary, I'm just trying to rationalize, there's a statement here that the Secretary of Education has further proposed a unified Union School District by merging the Boards of Blue Mountain Union. You talked a little bit about Blue Mountain Union, but when I'm looking at the report from the secretary, the primary recommendation is a merger of Oxbow, Bradford, and Newbury. So am I missing something?
Well, I understand, well, BMU has recently been assigned to R&amp;G Supervising Union. That occurred after the public issue of the secretary's plan.
But that's just an assignment, but the...
Yeah, just an assignment under...
Which can be changed, but the secretary's initial recommendation was for the...
For the SU.
For the three districts.
I believe that for by itself.
Right.
Yeah, wait, where's that? But it was my understanding, and I'm not absolutely positive here, but my understanding was that in Blue Mountain information, that Blue Mountain was directed to now become possibly a forced merger. So it was two separate spots in the report.
There are two, yeah, there are two separate spots, but I think they sort of can stand independently, I think there are a few different options. So I guess the question I have for you is, if we just leave Blue Mountain out of the equation and let's just assume that they could be reassigned to different SU, are you, are you still opposed to the concept of the three districts merging together?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think we sort of addressed that in one of the bullets as far as the economy of scale, and if you look at other options or situations that have happened like Hardwood and Newbury, the secretary points to that there wasn't enough economy to make that push worth it. And in our proposal, back to the state when we did our alternative governance, we suggested that really our best way forward would be to include BMU because of that ability to bring in more students, to create more of a governance structure as far as if you're going to look at merging, we see this as really the better way forward. If BMU is not part of the election, then we struggle to see why that would make sense.
So if, if the merger included BMU, you'd be supportive of a merger?
As long as we can keep our own board, so not necessarily merging the entire piece, but rather trying to move this governance structure further would be more attractive with BMU part of it because of the numbers. With just the three of us, the numbers, we just didn't feel like the numbers bring it.
Because with, with Blue Mountain, was it, Frank's number was 1,700, including Bradford. And without Bradford, it's the 1,300.
And then we run into the tax implications of that. So it just, when we went through our 706B study, it became very unattractive financially for our communities. It was really not. And that's why this study broke up, because it just didn't physically make sense in our tax payer, they were not supporting it.
And sorry, I just want to follow up because I want to be really clear on what your wishes are. So if BM, when you, I didn't quite hear you, I just want to make sure I understand, when you were talking about governance structure with BMU, are you talking about a supervisory union with everybody continuing to have their own, okay, so you're not in favor of one supervisor in the district?
But you do like that you have the SU including Blue Mountain.
Absolutely.
But with, but with each, but you still all, you have your own boards?
Yeah, and our...
No, go ahead.
Our biggest thing is that we just feel right now with all of the changes that have been going on. OESU itself has had many struggles for many years, and we feel like we're right now in the hustle of true opportunity, we're, we're personally. And I feel, I feel that going forward with that forced merge would jeopardize that opportunity. And, and so we feel like that we can all come together under the, each individual board and work towards a mutual goal, there's true opportunity. And that's what we feel that is the best path forward.
And what's the distance between the two high schools?
15 miles, 17 miles?
Probably 50.
Approximately 17 miles. But that BMU includes obviously like Rock and, and they're much further in and out, so the driving distance is deceiving, as it always is in Vermont, right? You can drive in a straight line, you do a lot of these things. He just winds it. Doesn't happen.
On a collective bargaining issue, you were mentioning about the salary schedules. My understanding, if BMU is part of supervisory at this point, you're going to be bargaining collectively. That doesn't necessarily mean you're going to end up with a single contract, or even if you achieve a single contract, a single salary schedule. So you still could bargain separate contracts instead of bargaining collectively, and even if you come up with a single contract, you still have separate schedules to disapply.
Yes. Yeah, so pardon me if I'm wrong, there's lots of moving parts here. There's a new superintendent, right, for OESU as of last month, right? And, and our new superintendent has to address previously uncompliant mandates like special education and transportation. So I'm thinking about that, and I'm thinking about what you just said about the customer opportunity. And I'm wondering if you've thought about whether our superintendent is going to be able to address these new opportunities, whether they're multiple different, if your, if your proposal stands, or your conversation stands, will your superintendent be able to do the work? I think my concern, like your superintendent's having a responsible, such as the board's directives and agendas, can that superintendent be the educational leader that we would like to serve?
I guess I'll address that. Because we were aware of alumni and the new finance manager coming from BMU, there's a tremendous level of excitement in regards to the leadership we believe we now have. Our board, which we were going to submit to you tomorrow, has come up with a proposal for, that would be used as a process for future OESU meetings, which I believe will address many of the things that we were talking about. I think unfortunately because of the fact that we have had so many changes in interim people doing the job, I've been on the board, I'm the 22-year listener, so I've seen a lot of history. And I can tell you that when issues were brought to the board, and well presented by the superintendent or a member, his or her staff, I cannot recall ever having a situation where the board didn't give its full cooperation to get it done. I think because of all the chaos and confusion, and we were also in the middle of trying to do a new teacher contract when the special ed information came out, we tried, we applied for waiver and tried to put that information off on that decision, and then we were in a position where we had an interim superintendent, which we didn't really determine until already the end of the school year. So things were a bit hectic, to say the least. What we're proposing is through the Act 46, and I have to tell you, this has been a very long, three or four years. But on the other hand, it was the right thing to do in our mind, it said, it forced us to sit back and say, are we doing the right thing now and what do we need to do in the future? So I believe with our suggested meeting schedule and how we're going to put things together, I believe we can change things dramatically, and I believe those issues regarding the transportation and special ed, if you put the right people focused on it and the board understands they were empowering people to get this done, that we're going to solve all of these things. I have complete confidence that we will. And I guess what I need to also say, that when we, it was mentioned earlier in the last report by the Oxbow plus Bradford Board, we had two public meetings with those four boards, BMU and the other boards involved. And we had a lively discussion, I guess would be a nice way of putting it. But one of the questions that was asked in both meetings was, please tell us what we cannot accomplish by working collaboratively that would be accomplished in forcing this merger. I asked it myself twice. The first meeting I received no answer. The second meeting I received was just easier. Well, if you consider what we wrote and what we talked about in our proposal, we've been working almost three to four years now. I will really appreciate you giving full consideration to not basing your decision based on what's easier, because we have worked very, very hard for what we have at Newbury Elementary. And we believe we're moving in a very good direction, and we would like to continue.
I add to, Mark, do you have anything?
I guess you just asked, you know, one of the things about what can be accomplished. I think we heard earlier today, and we've heard in the previous meetings, that one of the things that happens when you bring adults together as one school board as opposed to multiple school boards, is that it focuses conversation more. It allows the administrators of the system to have everybody around the table at the same time. So I guess that would be the answer to that question that you're asking.
Yes, and I think once you get referring to the additional information since Friday tomorrow, you will see in that proposal that that's a challenging question. I don't think we do enough of that. We have done that in various opportunities over the 20 years I've been on the board, where Bradford and Newbury and Oxbow have sat down at meetings on occasions to deal with additional topics of interest. There's no reason why we couldn't continue to do that, but our point is that we don't believe forcing a merger is going to make that any easier reaction.
Oh, and if I can say, I'm sorry, to sort of go back to the question about how could, would it be easier to do this all at once versus sort of spreading it out, I think is part of the question. What we sort of, and I think we have had these conversations in meetings, as far as we have this special ed issue that needs to be dealt with very, very quickly. Our concern as board members as well is there's serious conversations that have to happen if a forced merge is set upon us. We have to discuss articles of agreement, we have to move ourselves forward in a governance structure, we have to come up with voting regulations on how all of those things are going to be set up. Those are intense, very emotional conversations that need to take place. So that support for those conversations is also going to need to be there. And so which one would be more draining on a newly formed SU staff, whether, you know, and it depends on which way you look at it. Personally, I think that emotional conversation of articles of agreement, trying to move forward into that is a, is a much harder thing to support and a much more draining thing. Whereas if we continue to work the way we have, give them the time to get through the administration staff and then try to collaboratively come up with those things, I think it is a better option for success.
I think we only have one minute left, but, sorry, Oliver, do you want to ask you a question?
Yeah, really quick question. So how do you propose, if you're going to continue with independent governance structures to sort of control the variability in your student counts?
Do you mean in terms of the, the number of students attending Newbury Elementary?
Yeah, just in, well, in terms of the, within the governance structure, your equalized pupil count, one of the challenges is when you have a smaller governance structure, you have a lot, tend to have a lot more variability, which sends your tax rates, you know, sort of a yo-yo effect. So how do you propose to sort of, without the ability to aggregate those students, how do you propose to sort of level off the variability?
Well, as a board, we've taken a number of steps over the last few years. One of them was when we had a retirement of the lunch program, for instance, we went and hired the Abby Group to now provide our lunch program, which has provided savings for the school and helped keep the cost down, because we were running a $20,000 a year deficit on the lunch program, not in the paper. We just had a vacancy at nighttime custodian for the school. We have just gone out and contracted a company to come in and provide that service for us so we won't be paying any additional benefits or, or any other associated costs for that.
Yeah, so we just, we have a lot of people.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, no, I'm...
Oh, I said some...
No, no, it's, we've got all the time, we're all ready. We've got all the time, and just Michael, that, we have a whole list of things to go through. And no, you can initiate, and again, we can take any additional documentation, and so just send that my way, and so make sure that our board gets that, that'd be very helpful.
We really appreciate your interest.
Yes, thank you for having us. I can email this to you if you prefer. Yes, that would be great.
I do want to ask, if you are in the audience, if you can make sure you've signed in, if you want to comment, we do need everybody standing to have a seat. We are, as I've said earlier, we're in somebody else's house, we play by their rules, and we are at the steakhouse, and one of the things is you can only have 100 people in this room, and we are getting closer to capacity. So we need anybody that's standing to be sitting down. And if there comes a point that we need to ask, are we at that point?
We are.
We are at that point?
Yes.
If there are people that are not associated with this, if we could make sure, so we allow space for people to be here, if we could step out for maybe just a little bit just so we can take turns, so people can get their voices heard. We just want to make sure that we're not over our fire capacity. So if there are those that aren't associated with the U-32 and wouldn't mind stepping out to give space to people that are waiting outside, that would be really helpful. And just so we can maintain, and again, if you're standing, please have a seat. And it allows us to, the seats give the number count, to maybe, we can have a number of. There are some seats, they... There are some seats, there is a seat for you. Is that open? Yeah, there's a seat right in the middle here. There's also some up front. I see some in the back, oh, over on this side, there will be some. That would be very helpful. Thank you. It's amazing how this makes people come out and want to be excited about education. So, I think that's the good part, and it's our stat. So, let's, I think now you have two seconds. You've got the part, so if you want to check for us, thank you. And if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves and name your director. And again, if you do your presentation, you need some time for us to ask questions. Thank you.
I'm Matthew DeGrove, I'm a member of the DODI Elementary School Board in Worcester. And I'm also the Chair of the Washington Central S U Board.
I'm Floria Smith, I'm a member of the Small Elementary School Board. And I'm a member of this.
I'm Tomson, U 32 Board from Callas. And Matthew Soladas, he, and Flor as well. Matthew was the Chair of our Section 9 Committee, and Flor of our 706 B Committee.
So, we're going to take turns, and try to take numbers. So, good morning. Thank you for coming to us today. We know that you haven't received our recommendation from the A O S, but we're here today to ask you through your alternative proposal and dig a little deeper into why we submitted an alternative proposal. It is easy to tell a single story for all districts. You have been immersed in this process for a long time, and we have been instructed to use the poster child consolidation. We're here, but we're more complex than what you have seen. We are human beings, and there is never a single story that fixes all. In my experience with working closely with our five communities as Chair of the 706 B Committee, I came to understand that we first needed to build trust between our communities in order to move forward. We have come a long way in this, and we all understand and believe that what we all want is what is best for all our kids across our elementary schools, middle school, and high school. You may be assuming that our request for an alternative proposal is just about the adults and not the kids. However, the work that we're doing now is aligned with all the goals of Act 46, and it's truly what is best for kids. The work that our schools are taking part in supports a strong multi-tiered system of support in all our schools. We all are working hard to make sure good first instruction happens in every classroom. Interventions are in place for those who are behind, and supports are in place to help students exceed the expectations. We're supporting strong professional development for teachers, and give them time to collaborate and plan so they can teach with intention. We're starting to see small gains in closing the children gap in their senior. I know that you're looking at some of our small schools, and we believe that organically changes will happen without needing to be forced into something. I hope you do realize that changes will evolve with time. But if the state forces this into a preparation that is not right for us at this moment, it will put the brakes on all the good work happening now. The children will be the ones that suffer, and our leadership team has worked so hard to move us forward in the right direction. To give you an example, just two weeks ago, on August 2nd, we had a first school board retreat with the majority of our board members across the schools attending. Nate Levinson from District Management Group facilitated the retreat, expanding and strengthening the supports for struggling students. We are already doing a lot of this best practices, and more work is happening as we speak. We came out of that retreat with an even better understanding of our commonalities across our schools, but also with an understanding of all the work that still needs to happen. As board members, we're supporting our leadership team. We're ambassadors for the work in our communities, and we're proposing budgets that support that work. Our teachers and staff do the best to make sure our case develops under the growth mindset. The school boards in Washington supervise reunion are committed to this growth mindset too, and will continue to learn to seek and to support best practice, and to provide the best education in the world. We will bring something valuable to the table. We will continue to share an understanding of the equity issues across our schools. This proposal brings together heart and heart. It focuses on the good that we have going on right now. The turn of voices and affirmation of that work, and is what is best for us.
So, you can use this one too.
Yes. Great.
Thanks, Flor. We're here in large part because greatly differing levels of indebtedness, as the law would say. Makes it so that a unified union district formed out of our six existing school districts simply cannot meet all five chords of Act 46. We're left with sole alternative, that Act 46 makes room for, which is defined as supervisory union of the districts. This alternative can meet all five chords of Act 46. And as Flor was explaining, it actually does meet all five chords of Act 46. I'm not going to rehash what you already have on our definition. There's just. I will, however, use it as a nifty acid test of the process of the fore. It serves well in this, in this regard, because it's objective, it's measurable, it's consequential, and it's devilishly tricky. Over the past three years, it's tripped out way better people than me. Part of the reason for this is that it seems like a lot of the issue of all, I mean, debt in the wider world of mergers is so mundane and commonplace. It's even in Chapter 1, Mergers for Banks. That's where we are. And what reinforces this idea of, don't ask me how I know that, what reinforces this tendency to view it as basically a trifling issue is that it's very easy to fall for some of the heftics that live in the law. One that I just mentioned, Section 723 of Title 16, which seems to say, sure, you may solve your debt problem. But then, when you actually try to do so, you find that other parts of the law with both key tools that you need in order to make a real solution. Our 706 B Committee looked at all of the mergers, the recent mergers, and their handling of their debt issues. And in every case, debt was pooled. There was no other arrangement other than complete repertition of indebtedness. So, I'm just likely to consider two approaches that I have encountered in this saga. Approach number one. A state-level authority lets you read your piece. And she says to you, your analysis doesn't sound right to me, but I'll look into it. And then, weeks later, she gets back to you and says, I can hardly believe I'm saying this, but you may actually be onto something. What can we do to fix it? Approach number two. The state-level authority says to you, there's nothing wrong with the preferred structure or the legal framework. It's embedded. They're perfectly fine, just as they are. The real problem is you, the short-sighted little school boards. This is why you need to be relegated once and for all to dustbin of history. Now, which approach passes that acid test in your mind? Openness, humility, pragmatism? Or what I'm afraid feels to many of us like arrogant, disdainful, dynamitism? The first approach was the approach that our legislators took. The second approach, you can read in its unbridged version, beginning on page 55 of the Proposing My Plan. And if you miss it there, it reappears multiple times throughout the plan. So, I know this is very hard. The authors of the plan are nice folks. They're very smart, very hardworking, friends and colleagues. The ones I know, I like too. But this is very far from their best work. It's important, and you owe it to them, you owe it to yourselves, you owe it, blah, blah, and to us, all of us, to cast a cold, exacting eye on this plan, as if perhaps you were a judge. And considering that in our case, we're looking at $3 million present value in potential confiscation looming over two towns, it's not impossible that that might come before a judge, but so.
How does Michael time?
Yeah. It's almost nine minutes.
Just want to make sure that you have time for your questions, so you can get your.
Yeah. I was just going to say, before I hand it off to Matthew, may I say something nice about that? Would that spoil the effect?
It's your time, it's your time.
Right. The suggestion of closer ties with Cabot and Twinfield is, as well. And I think we have a very capable superintendent and coordinator in station who can rise to the challenge of doing that. So, anyway, thank you, Matthew, for your return on patience.
I'll do my best to be extremely brief, maybe 30 seconds, 30 seconds remaining. So, I'll just reiterate a point that I think you already know, which is that, as others have said, we've worked tremendously hard over the last three years on this issue, just put in countless hours. We took the law quite seriously, and it's in junk and in charge quite seriously. And I think tried to evaluate all the different options and issues on their merits. We had a lot of disagreement, a lot of spirited discussion. In the end, the, all six of our school boards unanimously endorsed our A G S proposal, and pointed you that at this time and under these conditions, we feel like we already would need that for our school, and our school kids. That is an alternative that would be less bad, I guess. So, just to note that we are unified and unanimous in coming to you today. So, that's all, thank you, all the questions.
And so, I know what we're.
Come on, a little over nine minutes.
Okay, so we have time for questions. So, Oliver, can I get started?
Yeah, so the, well, the theme I was hearing a lot about from your testimony was concerned debt and unequal distribution of debt in a merger scenario. And I'm curious, in your 706 B study, the process, Act 46 envisioned and laid out in the statute for the voluntary phase of merger, a number of supporting mechanisms to assist with that kind of transition. So, there were a number of tax stabilization mechanisms, et cetera, to help districts come together and bring those varying financial obligations together so that the impact wasn't as great. I'm just curious, did you do any of that financial analysis in the 706 study?
Oh, yes. In fact, it's reflected in our Section 9 Committee, so I think it's pages 30 to 33, or thereabouts, there are charts and everything, yes.
And even, so even with those, if you've gone through the voluntary merger, even?
Even with those, you see, the effects of indebtedness in our case last for 14 years. The most important effect lasts for 14 years. And of course, the tax incentive lasts for only four or five. And even with, even in year one, with the maximum tax incentives, there was no lowering of taxes for, basically for two towns.
John?
Magic one. The debt problem goes away. Just hypothesize that for a moment. Would you be, you could merge that one?
I think it's a little bit dangerous to engage in hypotheticals. But I guess I would say that certainly if the debt magically went away or was solved in some, in some way, it certainly would be a lot easier for us to consider consolidation. I think that's as far as I can do.
So, what are the other obstacles then?
I think the other obstacle chiefly that we noted throughout our community engagement process and kind of assessing where people are at on this issue, is that there's a tremendous amount of opposition to the idea of consolidation. We took that pretty seriously, and we felt that not just on its face, but also as a probable competitor, challenge, to accommodate mergers successfully. So, that would be the other piece, both being the two meanings.
I think you, at least two of you, maybe all three of you, were here during the presentation by Addison Central. And on the face of it, it would seem like their situation and yours are not terribly dissimilar. But for the debt question, there were debt issues there, but they were perhaps more manageable. There was opposition, there was skepticism. It's hard for me to see what the difference between the two situations is of the debt, and to understand, you've heard what they had to say. It sounds like, their situation sounds like what you're describing. What am I missing?
I'd love to address that, yeah. I appreciate your giving us an opportunity to address that. I've said publicly that to the extent that our school boards may currently be challenged or not performing optimally with regard to best outcomes or best practices, that it relates far more to what I call culture than it does to structure or systems. There was a comment made during the Addison Central presentation, for example, that got picked up, I think, by some of the board members, that systems really help to mitigate or, you know, manage or make irrelevant the difficulties that might arise from challenging relationships. In my experience as an executive administrator, a board member, someone who has served boards, that just isn't true. Organizational culture, by which I mean the way that people are living together in a innovation, will eat systems for lunch, and release your energy claims for work as well. So, there's just no substitute for doing the hard work of building better relationships with, across your school system. If you want to implement any initiative that involves change, you will have people who are transparent reviews, and you'll have to overcome that inertia and your ability to do that will be based on the relationships that you have, and the trust that you have with those people, as much, if not more, in my opinion, as the systems that you may have in place. So, the steps, I think that what the Act 46 process has done has really brought us to a realization that our, our board culture has not been great, and we have work to do in building and strengthening and improving the quality of the relationships, and therefore, what we're able to achieve together. And we, I have a whole list of things that we've been doing to do that, actually, you know, over the last many months. But so, that's my answer to the question, is that I'm not sure I agree entirely with how they characterize what is brilliant about consolidation in terms of systems eliminating the problems that you have with relationships.
I have at least three questions of Peter's, if any, for us.
So, I'm wondering about community engagement. The 706 B Committee requested a supermajority vote, I believe it was nine out of 11. I don't think we've seen that before in any of the proposals that have come before us. And no community's actually voted on any of the merger proposals, and that's compelling for us to see in terms of records of votes and whatnot. Can you explain the process and whether the communities, the actual general populace, were engaged in the process and how it got conducted?
We're engaged in the process.
We're engaged in the process, that's why we have elected officials coming representing the towns during this portion. And we do have less than two minutes, so let's go.
And Kristen is almost answering your question for me. The, I don't recall in 2015 when the Education Committee was drafting Act 46, or when it was voted on in General Assembly, a remark by anyone in leadership at that time, that this is such a consequential decision that we really ought to put to a statewide alignment to see what the people think about it. We were at a voter's summit, and we sought it in many ways. I personally spoke to either in groups or individually, at least 150 voters in Worcester, which was a small town, that's about a third of our electorate, our voting, our registered voters. We had many community forums, we posted every time that there was a development. We did, we commissioned and paid for a rather substantial survey by a third party. But in the end, we didn't feel that a vote was required of us that practically. We also practice representative government. And our voters elect us to do our best and doing our conscientious dictate for the good schools and for the good school kids. And so that's why we did not ultimately have a vote. And I guess if there's time, I would just add one other short piece, which is that I was actually quite a strong advocate for having a vote in our community meetings during our 706B process. And if you asked any of our 706B committee members, they'd probably say I was a broken record on the topic. And, but it wasn't because I felt it was necessary from a democratic standpoint, but rather tactically, I felt that whatever the outcome of the vote was, if we came to the state board with that eventually, it would be forgotten and virtually impossible to ignore, is very difficult to ignore. So that's why I was really surprised when the secretary's plan was issued. I saw that actually it was apparently quite easy to disregard, ignore, discount votes that had happened and I felt in retrospect quite glad that we did not waste our voters' time by putting them through that process.
So, is that it? Yeah. Okay. So, thank you for coming in. And again, that's what, in giving this small information, so thank you. At this point, we are going to just take a quick break. So we will be coming back, because we are running a little bit of time. We just have a five minute break and come back at ten thirty-five. Thank you. We can have people take their seats again, which allows us to make sure we can hear everybody. Just to remind you, we're back for break. We're going to give three more proposals that we're listening to and hear from elected officials. We have public to be heard. I want to make sure people there, it's the sign and sheet over there. Everybody here will sign up so for the meeting, so we keep track of who is here. So if everybody makes sure they sign up. If you wish to speak for public comment, there's also a sign up sheet for that. And I know I was just looking over there, there might be a little confusion about which sheet to sign up on. So if you're here for the Osco, Newbury, U thirty-two, Barnard, Huntington, Orwell, that public to be heard is at eleven thirty. So make sure you sign up for that public to be heard. So making sure everybody gets time for their voice. So we, we're coming back for Barnard and we have John, who has time. So if you want to just introduce yourselves for the record and we can get started.
I'm Pamela Fraser. I am on the Windsor Central Modified United Elementary School Board and for Barnard seven to twelve. And I'm a member of the Alterative Governance Structure Committee and Board Director.
I'm Corinne Park, the Chair of the Barnard Strategic School Board and a member of that.
So we have some clear comments to take about in ten, ten minutes.
Thank you.
Consolidation could be a good idea if the school cannot afford programming, has negative outcomes and/or is too expensive, like we saw this morning, and the positive outcomes. This is not the case, though, with our school. Barnard is reading and in some cases exceeding the five goals of Act forty-six. We meet the state educational quality standards, have academic outcomes above state averages, have per pupil cost in line with the state average amongst the lowest in our SU, and highly significant to our proposal, our enrollment is growing. While the secretary's plan uses the concept of volatile enrollment as justification, a justification for recommending merger for Barnard, actual data shows steady and dramatic growth over the past five years, with enrollment growing from sixty-two to eighty-one and currently eighty-three for this coming year. We meet the goals for having high levels of operational efficiency, transparency, accountability, fiscal responsible budgets, and a long history of shared resources in our SU. Our Principal Hannah Tyne was recently named Elementary Curriculum Coordinator across the SU, reflecting another strength that we bring to the SU and the level of cooperation. Beyond these quantitative achievements, our proposal also assumes your capacity to appreciate a concept of education that encompasses the value of relationships and community to-student experience. It is difficult to make a qualitative argument with parties that are tuned only to quantitative ones, those who only discuss education as fungible as a product of deliverable. But many sophisticated educators and policymakers understand the significant positive impact of strong interpersonal ties and of individual attention on behalf of Barnard Academy. The recommended merger decreases our ability to meet and exceed the goals. Mergers will force us into a relationship with those who have already codified their plans to diminish our successful school and continue to demonstrate unwillingness to compromise. With merger, quality and equity for our students will be reduced. Firstly, I'd like to talk about two ways. Firstly, our preeminent four-star pre-K program would be at risk for reduction. The Mud voted, the Windsor Central Mud voted in April of this year to begin offering public pre-K in its member elementary schools only to the degree that it is cost neutral. Thus, with this unanimous vote, the Unified District has made a decision incompatible with our more extensive thirty-five hour week programming for three and four-year-olds. To maintain parity, we will have to cut back the program that offers optimum equity of opportunity, opportunity which advances future learning capacities and which closes the achievement gap for economically disadvantaged students. Our two board members' votes to invest in pre-K to where we are on that board would have no impact on sixteen votes against monetary investment in pre-K. Secondly, Windsor Central Mud Article fifteen authorizes the removal of two grades from our school despite a very weak rationale for the choice of our school. Not only would this render us unsustainable, but forcing some, but not all, students in a unified district to bus to elementary school and therefore to have two school transitions in two years is an inequitable burden that solves no problem. Our students face no opportunity gap and we already share significant resources and work together in many ways, ways that do not threaten our campus. The secretary's plan contains misleading data and information about our school. The AOE sourced ADM data in our proposal shows undeniable significant growth, which I mentioned in enrollment, but in ADM, over five years, the ADM has grown from sixty in 2014 to seventy-six in 2018. That's a growth rate of twenty-six point six seven percent. The only difference in growth over that period is a two-point-one ADM decrease one year. Oddly, even though ADM is defined on the AOE website as including pre-K and published ADM numbers include a pre-K ratio, the secretary's plan uses a new calculus, removing pre-K to assert a different, lower and more volatile ADM. This calculation combined with selective attention to two years leads the secretary's plan to misleadingly assert that our enrollment has, quote, "fluctuated dramatically over the last five fiscal years," end quote. The secretary's plan appears to have chosen a simple years decrease and subsequent return to steady growth out of context to create a narrative of volatility. And that the plan goes on to assert that enrollment volatility can lead to tax volatility. Though this may be true, it is irrelevant because our enrollment and our tax rates have been, our enrollment has been steadily growing and our tax rates have been steady. Secretary's plan also downplays the significance of Article fifteen, which I already mentioned, which requires the restructuring of elementary school configurations and recommends the removal of fifth and sixth grades from our school. This article is likely the single biggest reason that our electorate voted now on merger. And we find it to epitomize the Unified Board's continued unwillingness to create a new definition of us that recognizes Barnard's strengths and offers equal powers and protections for member districts. This leads us to two last points today. The secretary's recommended merger encourages closure and leaves us no access to the increased fairness of the draft default articles of agreement mentioned at the last SB meeting in Newark. The loss of our school after four years is not a mere theoretical concern, but a reasonable foreseeable consequence of this recommended merger. In addition to Article fifteen, the current Mud article of school closure offers us little protection against the whim of our neighbors. So we understand that your board will not close our school. It will be a local decision, but it is a highly predictable local decision that we believe that the merger will not only encourage closure, but will actually create the conditions for closure. Ironically, the AOE now seems to recognize that there are vulnerabilities for small schools in merger agreements like ours with these drafted default articles and agreements that you will vote on or have voted on, and I'm not sure where you are in that process. We applaud the AOE for recognizing the validity of such concerns, such as protections for small districts regarding school closure and reconfiguration of school grades and buildings, and imbalanced board representation. However, because we'd be forced into an already operational unified district, we would have no access to these articles because Mud electorate has previously voted on different articles and those votes will be honored, not community sentiment. If your board concurs with the AOE and approves the recommended or has approved the recommended default articles, then your board should not vote to merge any Nned into a unified district who don't have access to those more fair-minded articles. As you know, according to the law, your board must not judge Section nine proposals more stringently than you judge Section five plans. Your obligation is to uphold the law and not the AOE's recommendation. There's ample evidence that legislative intent was to allow alternative structures for school districts like ours that meet and exceed the goals. Thank you.
Just a couple more minutes. Pamela and I and many other committed representatives of our town have spent literally hundreds of volunteer hours researching merger possibilities, sitting on committees, exploring relationships, and finally writing our proposal on how Barnard will continue to meet the goals of Act forty-six in a way that respects and secures Barnard's strengths and values as a community. We've shown why the theoretical benefits of a larger governance structure would not actually benefit our school district on a whole, but rather reduce educational opportunities for our kids. But in addition to providing these evidence-based arguments, we'd also like to bring something important into sharp focus. We, and many others in this room, asking to be heard today, are often accused of being too emotional about this issue, perhaps too insular, focusing only on our students instead of all students in the region. But it's both reasonable and important to feel passionate about the threat involved here and to feel protective of what we have. This forced merger will damage a school and a community that is currently thriving. Our small communities are held together by values that will be slowly corroded as the school is extricated from its heart, whether slowly or quickly. Values having to do with mutual respect and support, of face-to-face kindness to neighbors, service and gratitude. The school is the heart of the community. It's where we come together in support of our children. It's where we show one another that we care, across generations, across economic, political and social divides. By forcing consolidation, you take away the opportunity for us to care for each other in a very fundamental and intimate way and our community loses its heart. Our children grow up without those community roots so necessary in today's world. Has Vermont stopped caring about values other than efficiency? I hope not. It's vital to recognize that your decision is about something more than numbers. It will show how much we've lost as a state if we've stopped listening to the communities who really care. If we're not listening to each other, especially when we care very deeply, we have lost the heart of Vermont. Thank you for giving your comments today.
Ten minutes left.
Oliver?
So I just want to pick up on your comment about educational quality and that you're feeling as a proposal, that what you offer today in terms of your program meets all of the goals in terms of quality and equity. And you mentioned sort of the concern that if you do move into a merged governance structure, that there's a possibility that, that the school might become pre-K through second grade and that the older grades students will go somewhere else. My question is, when you were speaking about, you know, the opportunities that you have available today, how do they compare with what's been proposed for these other structures? Are you looking at a reduction in opportunity if you move to that type of structure or equipment?
I think that my almost year now on the Modified Board gives me a great deal of perspective about not just what the 706B committee came up with, but how that's being interpreted this year and will continue to be interpreted. And I think that the 706B committee's plan, which first was pre-K through two at Barnard and one other school, then through a lot of community pushback, became pre-K to four, so just removing two grades. The original rationale for that move, which would reduce two schools, two teachers overall, was to use the money that was saved by those two teacher positions to increase what we call specials, teaching and equalize them. But the plan was considered ill-conceived after the fact because it was determined that there actually wasn't any room in the curriculum to increase specials and that there really wasn't any, a big enough difference between programming at the different schools. So I think it's interesting to note that the original rationale for the plan has been discarded. Now it's more of an idea among Unified Board members of, that's still a good idea because we can use the money for something, basically, but there's no concrete plan.
You spoke about almost the inevitability of a school being closed and I'm wondering, we've seen numerous examples of this, in articles of agreement whereby the community had the ultimate decision in closing the school. Is that, is that true, not taking root in terms of your school?
Well, I think, so we've seen many proposals come before us when they wrote the Articles of Agreement themselves. And so in those Articles of Agreement that people have written themselves, they've chosen to put in those protections that are very different around the state. And I know it was mentioned, though, in Newark, we are reading our draft Articles of Agreement from the AOE and because we need Secretary one to allow the secretary to review them before they came out, but they should be coming soon, they've gone through the Secretary of State's office and they've gone back to the AOE for drafting, within the AOE right now, looking for those protections. So I think, what, Peter, if you're asking, I mean, the real fear is that you brought up, if the draft Articles of Agreement, which one could be using? And I think that was a good argument, if you are then putting in another group that already has a different set of draft Articles of Agreement. So what you're looking for is protection to make sure that your school is not at the heart of a larger board, correct? And then, I mean, the bigger question regarding this board is which draft Articles of Agreement would be used in this circumstance?
Correct. And I would say the Articles of Agreement that the Modified Unified Board is, they're currently operating under them, right? So they're not, they're not just in the, they're not just a draft agenda that's been voted on, right? So there's a...
And I'm not sure what which are, so if you could tell us what they are?
Yeah, so, and this is one of the things that, if you can take one of this, but that we have in various, several different points throughout this past year since our district voted not to join, tried to bring to the board saying, you know, these are our biggest concerns, is there, is there room on this new board to reconsider these articles because they are, they perform very little, perform very little protection for the school? So for school closure, it's simple majority, Modified Unified Board vote, and then brought to the electorate, but simple majority of the combined electorate. So we've offered a few examples of how these can be strengthened to accommodate, sort of address and recognize, you know, communities that are going to be most impacted and they have gotten aware of those. That was in the American, we were supposed to talk about restructuring.
Also, the restructuring article...
On the board, no.
That's the board.
Board composition.
Oh, board composition.
Oh, board composition. We would like to ideally have a conversation with the Unified District about the possibility of a hybrid model. I don't feel that we're like as, you know, fatted, that we must do for us, but we would like to have the option to just even discuss it because during the 706B process, many of their members were telling members of the public that the only legal model was proportional and we kept trying to say, no, look, here's the AOE memo, that's not true. But it just, we felt that that incorrect information did not make it around to the public. But the other, third article of agreement that we've been trying to get the board and board members to be open to discussing is this article for removing grades from the Barnard School and Reading School. And as a member of the board, I can report that they are moving forward with the Reading piece. In fact, they voted, although unsuccessfully, to take the sixth grade out this year. There's enormous pushback from members of the Reading community, but it's on the slate to be discussed again in September. So, and I can also report to you that after hearing about the default Articles of Agreement and being sort of amazed at the irony that we would not have access to those because they're exactly what we have been asking for, I put a motion forward to discuss, just to discuss the possibility of revising some Articles of Agreement on July thirty-first at Windsor Central Mud. Central Committee, and that was rejected. So it was decided that in December, after the statewide plan comes out, they can discuss what they're going to do with Barnard. So I felt that that was a significant statement of where they are.
And that's the thing we can just warn you to consider.
Thanks for those explanations. So I'm always interested in what would it take? Or put it another way, what are the one or two obstacles which if they were addressed and authentically resolved, would make it really possible? What are, what are the key obstacles that if addressed would make it possible? Or is it just not possible?
I, I think for our town, our electorate, the main obstacle, which was a very real obstacle, were these Articles of Agreement, so this particular merger and the, so if there were a way to address those, you know, we would be open to discuss, you know, coming back to the table. That being said, there is a large, you know, there are many of us that also believe that as we outline in our proposal, the benefits of merging don't necessarily, even beyond that, even if, even if the threat of school closure is not as great, the benefits of merging may not, may still not be worth giving up that local school board. And it's because of many of the reasons you've heard, you know, this morning and other times in this room, there is a value to sort of the community's real engagement in the school in these small towns. And that's a value that I think is, it's hard to put, you know, put your finger on, pin down, quantify, but it is very, very real for these rural towns. It's a reason why my family moved to Barnard, it's a reason why many of the town, family moved to Barnard, many of the new families who have come to our town and, you know, impacted the enrollment at our school have come to this particular community because it is one that has this kind of engagement. And, you know, that's not to say we can, we can foresee exactly what things are going to look like should, should this shift change, but we do know what a strong rural community looks like now, and we do know that this, that the school and that engagement in the school is the heart of it. And we do know that engagement in, and we've heard it even from merger boards here, engagement in the school processes, engagement in, you know, education and sort of the care for the children of the town, when the management of the school goes elsewhere, that really declines, you know? It's much harder for people to be involved, to be at the board meetings, to feel that they are empowered to impact what's going on in their school and with their children. So I think those are still obstacles to a merger, especially when you're looking at, I mean, if we're looking at a merged board and merger partners who share those kinds of values and who respect those kinds of values, I think our town's people might be more comfortable with entering into a merger. But for example, right now, those kinds of values are, and really, our town and our school are being really overlooked and disparaged with sort of a blind, a blind eye.
Sorry, it's a bit tougher. So I would refer to you to submit anything, as you said you're still working on boards and if anything develops between now and fall, again, you're not discussing in October, so if anyone can come up with a story, I'd be very excited. Thank you. If we could have Honeyton come up, please? All right, so at this point, if we, for Honeyton, so if you might just introduce yourself on the record, and again, just five, 10 minutes, comments max for comments to ask, and then just give us time for questions, that would be great.
Thank you. Paul Susan, Chair of the Huntington School Board.
My name is Carrie Lyatt, and I'm a school board member, and I also chair our PTO, and I volunteer at unions a week in or outdoor.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to present our situation. Huntington is located 10 miles south of Richmond, and here the most disperately located elementary school, which appears Memorial School in Chittany East, which presents one, one sort of backdrop on this. Another backdrop on this is that we are part of, we are part of Chittany East. We receive our special education services, our transportation services, and our administrative services from Chittany East. We have no issues with special ed and transportation whatsoever. We have an issue with administration because we believe they're charging us excessively for the services that the board receives. Innovative programs at Bruce Pierce, which we would hope would never change. I'm not suggesting they would under a merger, but want to make darn sure they don't, they don't change. We have a locally sourced food program for our school cafeteria. We have an outdoor classroom that was constructed totally, 100% of the local, local funds community did that for us. We have a forest Fridays program, which applies north to our school through the Audmon Center, which is located just a couple miles south of Bruce Pierce. The bottom line is, and I've been in education for my entire life, the bottom line is, we're talking about children's behaviors here. We're talking about their cognitive, their emotional, their social, physical behaviors. That's not going to change with merger. There is no way that a merger is going to help us with cognitive, emotional, social, and physical behaviors. It is not going to change Huntington in terms of special ed, it is not going to change Huntington in terms of transportation. The only possible benefit for merger has to do with efficiencies, administrative efficiencies. And again, we had this argument, and I'm not going to go into it now, there are questions I'm glad you responded to, around how we're being charged for administrative services. The lane was donated to the school 50 years ago. The building, the funding for the building was bequeathed in the local family. So we started out as being a community school, and many of the other schools that you're hearing from. In 2011, 14, 16, and 18, there were votes in Huntington. And in all four situations, the vote was no on a merger. The total vote was 63% no, 37% yes. No question, we're talking about a substantial majority of people in Huntington, having presented all of the information on all of the acts of all to the merger, changing language as best we possibly could over the years through community forums. In 2017, we had a debate starting in September about whether to warrant a fourth vote, whether we should take a position on merger. The board has never taken a position on merger until it's given to the community. Yes, these are the benefits, these are the negatives, as best we possibly could. And on split vote, four to one, we decided to warrant a fourth vote. And the reason that one person didn't vote for it was because she felt that the community didn't want to come back yet another time to deliver the same message. No, Huntington doesn't want a merger. We did a one vote, wrote 60% no, 40% yes. Now, where are we today? Well, in terms of the report from the AOE, it was, and it was a, it was a good solid report, and it was quite factual, with one, with one totally overstating having to do with property taxes. We benefited from the reduction in property taxes because we're part of the larger district. So the middle school and the high school, we received a proportional reduction, but we didn't receive the entire reduction. There are outstanding issues, and I believe this applies to every school that you're hearing from last month, today, and next month, every school, and I just heard it from Barnard. We have two particular issues. One has to do with voting, and one has to do with Articles of Agreement. The voting, it is not clear to me that there is language anywhere that supports a forced merger without a local community vote for that merger. So we don't know if there's going to be a vote. We're sitting here in August, we don't know whether there's going to be a vote in November or a vote in March. We don't know whether Huntington would have to vote for that merger. I have to assume they won't, but four, four times no, a fifth no would be what would occur statistically. And what would happen is the town's vote now. So we don't know if there's going to be a vote, we don't know how that all works. And as to Articles of Agreement, do we have to have Articles of Agreement on which to vote? Now, one would assume we shouldn't vote in case of Articles of Agreement. We don't have Articles of Agreement. We, Huntington School. There are those who argue that the existing Articles of Agreement, which were in effect for the Modified Union, do not apply to us. That's been an argument that's been made. So my response was, well, then what does apply? And the response was, this is probably going to end up going to court. Now, something that we don't want, but something we're very prepared to do, not with taxpayer money, if we have to argue about this. What are the, what's the hangup on Articles of Agreement, the way things are going to happen? Two, one is the property, and the second is the debt, our debt. Now, the current Articles of Agreement that are in effect with the Modified Union have had all of those towns, Baltimore, Richmond, Jericho, Underhill, all of their debt from those five elementary schools was absorbed into the larger Modified Union, was all picked up 100%. There's been an argument that we cannot assume that our debt would necessarily be picked up by the Modified Union. Well, that's simply a nonstarter for us, absolutely a nonstarter, that all of our debt wouldn't be picked up, just like it was with the other towns. The other question has to do with our property, which was donated to the, took it not to the use of the school more than 50 years ago. What happens to that acreage? How do we do that conveyance? Would we be expected to convey the entire property, or could Huntington keep part of that property, et cetera? And that's just two of, two of the issues, the probably those are the two most salient issues. We don't have Articles of Agreement that we can vote on. We would argue there has to be Articles of Agreement in place before there's a vote. We would argue there has to be a vote in Huntington and in the receiving district. There is no way that your board is going to be able to make a recommendation on Huntington in time for a November vote. It's simply not going to happen, and I don't know how it would happen in any town unless, unless the towns are going to warrant a contingent vote, which says something like, if the state board says X, we'll do Y. And that's going to present a real problem to us. So we need Articles of Agreement if there is going to be a merger. We don't need Articles of Agreement if there's not going to be a merger. We don't know when to start, to retain an attorney if we have to do that, develop Articles of Agreement. Should we wait until your recommendation is on the table to be able to do that? I think it's quite likely that we do not make an FY20 date on this. I simply don't see it, because if there's not a November vote, the budgets are already in place, we would have already put our budget in place for our plan. So we've got logistical concerns. So we're not in favor of the recommendation. We believe we're meeting the acts of goal, we believe we're meeting the goals of Act 46, just fine the way they are right now, and thank you very much for listening.
Any time for questions? All right, so first question, John?
Yes, about the debt. Say on a per capita basis, is your debt burden significantly different than those of the neighboring communities whose debt was absorbed?
Yes.
In which direction?
Our debt per capita is higher than the debt in the, in the other, in the other towns.
By an order of magnitude?
Uh, perhaps two to one, maybe a little less than that, maybe one and a half to one. We, the, this quickly, Huntington and our board supported the HVAC, geothermal HVAC system, 1.25 million dollars, installed that last year. That's a classy example of a decision Huntington made that the larger board probably would not have. They would have gone, they would have gone with a, with an oil-based or a wood chip-based system, or selecting an oil-based system, and saved about $500,000. But our town is very green and was very interested in the geothermal. So we've got about 1.25 million on the books from, from last year to 30-year bond, and we've got, I think, a couple others that were for that, to about two or two and a half million dollars. So, and that's a significant question, because if you're in the other towns, are you going to vote to accept Huntington when you know they're accepted? Because we're going to say they should have accepted our debt when our debt per capita is more than their debt. But we think they should, because when the Mount Mansfield Modified Union was put into place, there was lots of inaptities in terms of debt. Richmond debt was very high, it was very high, but all to some of the other towns. But what they did is they just brought it all in, and that was it, day was over. And Richmond didn't pay any more or any less than the other town.
Could you just talk to me, I received a public comment, one of them was a parent from Huntington, that talked about how others within the SU right now, within the mud, have interim district choice. And that was something they weren't interested in, but it's not available to them in Huntington. And because of some needs of their student, they would prefer they could go to a different school within, within the district. So is there any movement on the board to allow interim district crossing of students? Because you're in a peculiar position where you're in a mud, where everybody is under some rules, and then your students enter without a middle school. So for that early part, how are you working with the mud to create those opportunities for students in Huntington that need them?
Good question. I mean, choice is a good question, and I think movement of teachers is another good question, which is all I have. In terms of the choice, what happens is the family comes to the board, and the board makes a decision, family makes a petition to the superintendent's office, and it comes to the board and the board makes a decision, are we going to pay roughly $15,000 for that student to go to that other school in our district this coming year? I've been on the board since 2014, have not turned down a family. Now, that's a tough one for us, right? That's a lot of money. But if you think about it from a financial point of view, it's cost us about $15,000 to educate a student in 15 and 16, and it costs the Mount Mansfield District about 15,000 to 16,000 to educate that student. So whether that student's going to Huntington, whether that student's going to Jericho, somebody's paying for it, right? So we have in fact supported that. Now, would we necessarily support every family's petition? No, because right now we're doing it on an individual by individual case. And I can imagine a situation where the justification is not a solid justification. Where we merge and choice is automatically implied. But right now, it's discretionary on the board.
Oliver?
So two, two questions. First is, just looking at your, some of your statistics, particularly around enrollment ADM and your costs, and your ADM has gone, your enrollment has gone down sequentially over a number of years, and your costs are going up. So if you were to merge into a district, you, plus moving a debt into the district, it would seem to be, there would seem to be pretty significant financial advantages to the taxpayers, and you're just, I'm curious if you've modeled any of that out?
We have in the, first of all, the ADM calculation, I have to say, is a strange calculation. And I worked in Massachusetts, I worked in Connecticut, and now in Vermont, we've got this thing called ADM. I look at headcount, I look at how many students we have in the school, because that's how we're teaching, right? When the principal sets up the number of classes that we need, the number of teachers we need, it's not based on ADM, it's based on how many little children we have, how many preschoolers we have, how many pre- many grade one to grade four. If you look at enrollment for us, and you, and you can somehow get past the, and Barnard talked about it, the incredibly confusing calculations resulting from preschoolers, right, a couple years ago, where our numbers were a little crazy, they're up and down. We say number of kids, but they're up and down. We are slightly more expensive, we are slightly more expensive, right, than Bolton, Richmond, Underhill, Jericho, elementary schools. Yes, we are, but not by much. Our town budget, our town improved the budget this coming year, 0.29% increase, 0.29% increase for Booster Piers. And if there's any way that we can save money during the year, we will do that. If we need to get an attorney because of all of this, we won't do it out of taxpayer dollars. We will get people, we'll donate the money. They feel that strongly about it. So, anytime we can go to non-taxpayer dollars, we will, we will do that. But in terms of the overall financial efficiency, when you're on your computer and trying your spreadsheet, and you do the calculation, yes, on a perpuable basis, we are a little more expensive than the rest of the district. And from a taxpayer point of view, it would be slightly better off, okay? They know that. They absolutely know that in Huntington. They know they're paying for a quality school. They're willing to pay a little bit more. And I'm talking a little bit more, not a lot more. And every time we've gone to the voters, they've said, no, 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 and no. We know it's gonna cost a little bit more if we don't merge. We don't wanna merge. We're willing to pay a little bit more. And that hasn't changed, I know.
So, I can just move on to my second question. I just wanna pick up on your comment about the, about the boiler. And I'm having a hard time rationalizing that decision. And it sounds like, if I heard you correctly, a $500,000 premium over a woodchip boiler.
Over oil, yeah.
How does, it doesn't comport, I guess, it doesn't really comport with the goals of Act 46, particularly around providing greater opportunities for students. So, I'm, I guess what I'm trying to understand is the, how you think the argument you're making for retaining this, this control of these types of decisions actually furthers the goals of Act 46 around the issues of equity and educational quality?
If you had been in our school prior to the installation of our HVAC system, right, you would know why we had to do it the way we did it. The ventilation units on the floor were so old that mechanicals all had to be replaced, right? That's where we started. So, everything had to be covered. We did not wanna go with oil, and there were a large percentage of people in the community who did not wanna go with oil, nor did they wanna go with woodchips for a variety of reasons. And we really thought that geothermal was the way to go. 100 years, these wells will be in existence, 100 years. You can't say that in any other system, okay? The electric system that we have, those units are good for, those units are good for 20 years. So, we are good to go. The community voted for the HVAC system 80% to 20, 85%, I think, to 15%. They knew it was gonna cost them more, in tune of about $50,000 a year more. They knew that. And they knew, they knew that they were getting, paying in property taxes. In terms of Act 46, we don't believe that the merger would, per se, merger per se, is going to increase the ability of Huntington's being, having more quality, more equity, et cetera. We just don't, we just don't believe that. But the HVAC system decision was a decision made based on what the people in the community felt was best. We have a dehumidification as part of, if you know geothermal, right? It comes with automatic dehumidification. People in town can use Booster Piers for the first time if they want in the summertime, and you're not gonna want, even if it's 80, 85 degrees and 100% humidity outside, you're gonna say, this is really nice here. We never had that before. So, students are in a building now for the first time in 20 years where they can be educated properly because they have the right HVAC system. We would not have had air conditioning with the, with oil or with wood. And it comes off of the top of the, of the geothermal when I'm hanging from here.
So, we only have about a minute left, Peter.
You were the first mud participant as a result of, I think, 2012 Act 156. You kept your local board. You had representation on supervisor board, but you did not have any representation on the union board at this point. How, how is, how has, how has it impacted your, your district? And, and are you content with the way, the way it's been set up? I, I believe you were in favor of that, of that, of that bill. And I'm wondering how, how that's all impacted you?
We have about 30 seconds.
There were, there were, there were two towns who voted against merger, Richmond and Huntington. In 14, Richmond voted for merger. That left Huntington, isn't it? We have, I sit on the board. I sit on the Mount Mansfield Board to listen, but not to vote. And they do, the Chittenden East has a board, the Mount Mansfield has a board at the same time. Some of the issues are Chittenden East. I'm able to vote on those. I have two-thirds of a, I have two-thirds of a vote. The way it's set up now works fine. I'm on the collective bargaining committee. I'm also on the finance committee. We had somebody on the policy committee. We had somebody on the assessment committee. None of that would change. So, the way it's set up now is fine. What's gonna happen is, if we merge, Huntington will not necessarily have a representative on collective bargaining. Huntington will not represent, necessarily have a representative on the finance committee. That is really bad.
Thank you very much for coming in and sharing your thoughts. Thank you. We have Orwell come up to join us, so let's take this one from Orwell. Thank you. So, good morning. If you'd mind just saying this yourself for the record. And, and so we'll start with 20 minutes again, and we'll be on 3:10, and then we can pass.
Glenn Kuzma?
Peter Shown, Orwell School Board. I'll start. As you know, Orwell does not, does not wanna be part of the consolidated straight ballot in Union School District. We're currently in a modified Union School District with Slate Valley. The board's split on whether we should merge or not merge. So, the town voted to consolidate three times. On April 12, 2016, it was defeated 121 to 211. A revote took place on June 21, 2016, defeated again, 166 yes, 204 no. A second act study committee was formed, a new proposal was brought forward. It was two defeated for Orwell, for 137 yes and 219 no. Prior to the vote, numerous, numerous well-informed meetings were held. Voters were informed for the reason of vote. The state asked the towns to vote on these issues three times, and communities that didn't have all emerged three times. The school board is split. The town has spoken. The state should get the people of Orwell to decide if they want to merge. Orwell School's currently in the modified Union School District and in an excellent working relationship with Slate Valley. Prior to the vote, on the second plan, the state board of education approved the, but the plan, this plan contained provisions, which the towns are opt-out. Town of Orwell voted opt-out, did not consolidate. Now, it seems the town of Orwell is being forced to consolidate against the town's wishes. Thus, democracy, we chairs of Vermont is being cheated. The strong community is supportive of Orwell School.
Tell us about the split. What were the reasons given before going against Paulina?
Amongst the, I mean, I guess to that, with the board itself, right? So, the board itself is split. I know you didn't submit second amendment clause one because there was not a reason to have the board. So, could you talk about what are those, so various factions within the board? Help us understand that dynamic.
Well, my feeling is, well, regardless of how, how against the merger, but either way, I feel that the town doesn't wanna be in the merger. So, I, I feel that the town shouldn't be in the merger. I, I don't feel that there's any real benefit to the merger. We're already doing almost everything Act 46 says. We share resources. We're doing curriculum. That's all the saying. We have curriculum coordinator. And I just, we just don't see the benefits of actually merging, whether, as you say, the way we are right now.
And then to his man?
So, I am, I am one of the, the three board members that is in favor of the merger. I chaired the second study committee. And my primary feelings, and I, I understand where the town's coming from. But my first of all, having just had two students go through the school system, was that I felt that there would be better educational opportunities for students under a merger system. That was my, my major feeling. When I looked at this and the way Act 46 spelled out, I agree with you. We are sharing research sources very well. We, we work together when we're in the district as a union. Unlike some people, I don't fear that our school is gonna be closed with the merger. I think that in the second go-round, we addressed many of the concerns that the town had. The first merger proposal called for proportional voting. Second proposal, it's a hybrid. Every town has the same say. We really tried to tighten up the whole issues of school closure. So, it does come back to the town, and it requires more than a simple majority. In looking at things, as a, as a parent, both of my children, when they arrived at the high school, kids were arriving in ninth grade at different levels. And I'm hearing now that that may not be the case, but at that time, it was the case. And that was a, that was a major concern for me. And, you know, the other thing is, we are not, our community, there are not a lot of in-town jobs. Many people have to leave the community for work. In looking at the financial things, the way Act 46 is set up, I mean, we're starting to feel the pinch now. We're looking at a 15 cent increase in our educational program tax rate for next year on our over-approved budget. It was not an exaggeration, it was not an extrapolated budget. It was a level services budget. We do not add anything, but when you start having the other factors that cascade down. And I don't know how long our community will continue to support the school if we're gonna have large tax increases like that at the level of the, that we're having. The loss, potential loss of the small school grade is significant. That's about five cents on our tax rate. So, and we all know salaries and everything, they're going up. So, that played into my, my thinking. I understand where the people are coming from. Nobody likes the idea of being told what to do. But when I, when I weigh all of the options, that was why I supported this.
So, the first study committee that we had, I was the chair of the study committee, and had set back to allow a member of the public to be on the second study committee. I thought it'd be a better choice to have public input as well. My position has not changed as a board member. At the time that Act 46 was passed, I sat in the legislature, and I did not support Act 46 from the perspective of saving money with taxpayers. So, so for myself, you know, coming from a perspective of not supporting, and then being the chair of that study committee, really trying to be open and see, you know, all perspectives, it took me a while to get to the place where I did support Act 46. I think for myself, the equity piece made, you know, a mean hole. Again, as a board member, I've tried to represent all children. I had twin boys that did go through the school system, and we had some unfortunate situations with ill teachers. And it was two and a half years out of three years of education. That really was not quality education. And I felt as, you know, a bigger district, we may have the opportunity to have some full-time licensed staff that we could prioritize towards area needs. And that, that seems significant to me. Also, we share a lot of resources with our neighbor town, Benson. We share positions such as our teachers, phys ed, nurse. And, and my concern was that as we saw those other schools merge and work as a unit, that potentially, you know, years down the road, we may be on an island, and perhaps they, you know, we have a great relationship today, but I guess, you know, part of it was fear on my side, that if they chose to work with the unified union and we lost those shared positions, that would be very difficult for us to be able to staff those positions. So, you know, I understand where the town is coming from. This has actually really divided our town on many levels. Our school board leaders have not been the most pleasurable. I would like to concentrate on education and what's being offered at our school board meetings. And I can count on, you know, one hand, how many school board meetings we've had where we've talked about the education that's happening. It's mostly been about, you know, the situation and what we're tasked with here. And so, again, town is divided. Our board was 3-2 in support. That didn't come easily. It was an hour and a half of conversation at our last meeting in preparation for this. I appreciate what you all have done. And I think we're in a difficult position here with where our town stands as well.
So, the, my colleague asked a question before, and I don't think we've really heard a clear answer. What, what, where's the opposition? And I, and I heard there was a response to some opposition around school closure and voting that was resolved in the second study committee, but that was voted down again. So, what is the, what else is, I guess, where's the, the opposition coming from if those issues were resolved?
A lot of it's just town control of the school and being able to run Orwell as Orwell wants to run. You know, we wouldn't have our school board there at the Orwell anymore. It'd be a three-person people on a 18-person board. And that's, that's the biggest issue, that there's no gain in this for Orwell and Orwell's students, from what I've seen. So, it's, it's, a lot of it's just local control and running the school the way we wanna run our school, not the way all the other towns wanna run the school with us. Just, I think it makes it harder for people to, like, come to your school board meeting and talk about issues that you have, and talk about with five people that you know or 18 people you don't know.
Yeah?
I think I'll, my question outside, the same question, why? Because you folks have the reputation for having a good school and a centralized union. Things work well. We've got centralized services. And I begin, I'm asking myself, what difference will it really make in terms of how you operate?
Well, that's part of the problem. We, we have all that. So, what do we gain by going at, by consolidating with the Slate Valley? Right now, we're doing all that, and we're having good results. We do send students down to Fairhaven that are doing good. We have one kid that is in a second in his classroom now. I have a son that just went through. He's doing fine. He just went down, started last year. I have two other kids in school, and they're doing good. I don't see that merging is gonna improve any of that. You're still gonna have separate schools. We still have a curriculum coordinator. But you're still gonna have differences from school to school, student to student. That would be the case if you had one school or 10 schools, because that's the way students are. And we just don't see any benefit, other than we don't have as much control of our school as we do now.
I think the control is the big piece for the townspeople. I go back to when we worked on our transportation merger, and that was very difficult. We've been doing it for years now, and I look back, and we have an opportunity where we have a ski program at the school. And if we hadn't have merged our transportation, it would've been difficult to do a ski program, because we have two buses up at Killington at the same time for dispatching kids in Orwell. And so, that has actually provided more opportunity for us. But I think it's hard, you know, to see the opportunity. There's a lot of concern out there as to our seventh and eighth graders moving down to Fairhaven, and speculation of what that would do to the school and the population, and would that mean less kids in Orwell? And if we have decline of And if we have decline in population, would that mean the school closes? And so, you know, I can definitely see the piece of wanting to have local control and being able to make those decisions. I do understand that if seventh, eighth grade did go down, there's concern. It's parents and transportation, and that's more time spent going 15 miles in another direction.
John?
I don't know if you were here with the Addison Central presentation, tell you, many of their communities had concern about loss of local control. And they've gone ahead with a consolidation, and the going hasn't been easy, but the results have been pretty promising in terms of the opportunities for students. And the improvement of sending schools to be arriving at high school or middle school more or less on the same page in the same regions. One of the takeaways from that presentation was that the burden, the hard work falls on the adults, hard work of adapting to change, giving up what feels like control, and the benefits accrue to students. And it's maybe useful to remember that, what we all know, that we bring a very different perspective to the students. We bring a very middle perspective of the community of Orwell. And in particular, the perspective of adults in Orwell. And the board brings a different perspective, which is, our mandate is to look after the education of 76,000 children in the state and to be attentive to constitutional legal obligations of the state works on, which among other things means that children should have all opportunities required. Children shouldn't be the victims of where they happen to live. And to the extent that children can move across boundaries, to that extent, we can enhance equity and opportunities for kids. And certainly, that's been the experience already of some of the communities that have consolidated. So I think there's some things to be learned from the positive experiences of those who have combined. And many of the things that people were very, very afraid of have not materialized, largely because of very good agreements in advance. And that in many cases, there's a payoff, as you were describing. We both can see the benefits to students, and you can see very clearly the concern of the pressures of adults.
So, can I have a question to?
Yes. Yes, there must be a question somewhere.
So, I guess the question maybe I, that's the next intro, is just, looking back on the last five to 10 years, have you had to cut any opportunities for your students? And with those issues you're talking about, the taxes going up, have you been able to increase opportunities or have you gone to meetings where you go, we're cutting art, we're cutting music, we have to cut this program? So, just with your current, in the last five to 10 years, have you been able to add opportunities or have you been sitting around the table and figuring out which ones do you part away?
Yeah, so since I've been on the board eight years, we have not had to cut. Our town is very supportive of what is in the budget, though I would say we're probably pretty conservative about what we ask for as well. We've been challenged to put on additional higher opportunities. You know, we meet the needs of those children that are on IUPs, but the ones that are excelling, we've had members come to us asking us to challenge those children. We don't have the numbers necessarily to accommodate for another teacher, but that's not to say the town wouldn't support it if we put in. Our town is extremely supportive of what we ask.
And we, I've only been on the board in four years now. We did add the ski program, which is quite a good.
As you said, you've added that opportunity.
We certainly have added opportunities. We have not cut opportunities for our students. There are more opportunities than I personally would like to see added. I mean, I think that our upper students, we really need to get, start adding stuff along lines of STEM program, because as everything becomes globalized and our entire world is changing, that's going to be a very significant demand for our future students. And that's not a co-chief. Would our community support it? Yes. It may be a financial hardship for some. It may not be for others, but I mean, ultimately, it's the children that have to be the first part of it.
John?
I was just saying. Let's give you a couple of minutes.
Oh, thank you. Other, Stacy?
I think Peter could say. I think you said, if I got the words correctly, let me hit the difference between being part of the smaller, a small board or being part of the mud board. I think you said it's a matter of five people that you know versus 18 people you don't know, right? And I'm struck by that, because I think that's exactly, you don't know them. You don't know them yet. And I'm wondering if you could comment on the folks in Barnard's group a lot of what the, how things felt on that larger board? And so I guess I'm wondering if there are specific examples of mistrust or conversations that haven't happened, or is it just the fear that you don't know them yet?
No, nothing's happened like mistrust or fear or anything. I'm just, I mean, we're in Orwell, and so you have a board meeting in St. Germain. It makes it a lot harder for people to go to Fairhaven to meet to meet, and then you are a BSA. You will get to know them to a certain extent, but they are, you know, unless you work in Castleton or you work in St. Germain, or you're down that way a lot, or you have a kid in high school, you don't get to know these people as easily as you do the people that you're in the community. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing to know people outside the community. I'm just, you know, I just, I think it would be harder for the community to be involved the way they can be now. And that's one thing that our community likes. They're involved in our school. We like to be involved in our school. And I just, I feel there's still opportunities that we can do, and there's opportunities we can do through being in the mud like we are now. We can still share, and, you know, we have a good, great working relationship with us we always have. I don't see why that would go away. You know, the superintendent is great, and, you know, she wants to keep things going smooth and find which way we go. So, that's basically what I was saying.
Thank you. And when you said just four years, I mean, anybody on the board, thank you all. Yes, it's never, it could be 22 years, we're all. All right, so, we are, okay. So, what we have now is half an hour for public comment on the proposals that we've heard from first. I'm going to go through first and people from those towns, just to make sure we get to them. We have another set after lunch, and another time for public to be heard for those. We also then have another set after that, another public to be heard, and then a general public to hear. So, I know that a lot of people want to speak. We want to hear everybody. So, we are going to do two minutes per person, and we're going to try to get through. What I'm going to ask is that we have the first person, and then we'll have the second person. Oh, sorry. Okay.
This is my job, isn't it?
No. So, I'm going to ask John, we are, again, I know it's hard for two minutes, but if you see our schedule, we're trying to hear from as many boards, as many people as possible. So, if you could just, you know, I am, he's going to flip it over. It's actually helpful.
If you go too wide, you get this.
Yeah. Yes. We need, it's color-coded, it's kind of nice to loop it over when it's 30 seconds, just to give you a warning. And just to thank everybody for coming out and just being polite to everybody listening. I know this is a lot of people taking time off of their day and their work and to come and give comments. And you don't get to say everything you would like to say. Please send public comment. I got it, it was 11 o'clock last night. They were still coming through. So, please send those, whatever you don't get to say. So, if you want to start, say your name.
Thank you. My name is Gail Connolly. I'm a citizen of this in Huntington. I'm a retired school administrator also. I've been positively impressed, and not anyone here is you didn't have plenty for sparse, sparse analogies to today so far. So, let me. I'm the least qualified. My mother would not let me play football. By 40 years in school, I've watched more football in high school, football games than everybody in the room. All coaches that are in the winning, put this up for the fourth word. This needs fourth word. And Huntington meets, we voted no four times. So, if you drive by Huntington, please imagine all of us holding our four fingers up. Thank you very much. I might have more to say. Bill, will you give a quick, a big thank?
And it's actually very nicely written in handwriting, so for those that like the person. So, persons that appreciate that. And if you have Susan Clark come up to you, and then.
Hello. My name is Kimberly Jessup, and I serve as the state representative for Middlesex and East Mountain Pillar. I helped organize a letter, which I hope people all read. It was signed onto by the entire general assembly delegation representing the towns that comprise the Washington Central Supervisory Union. And the letter recognizes that the proposal, the pro-pro-proposal results from considerable and difficult work by community members as required by statute. I attended many of the meetings myself and came away with a deep respect for all the participants. By now, I assume you're familiar with many of the legal, technical, and policy areas pertaining to this proposal. Like the letter signed onto by members of the general assembly, people found a way through their differences and came together behind this proposal before you. So, here we are. At the end of the day, it's my view that we're really left with a fairly fundamental question, and that is, does consent matter? It does, very much, and for two rather different reasons, in my view. The first concerns performance. If the win-win elements of the so-called preferred model are well-suited for nearly all, then it shouldn't need to be forced upon communities at the end of a thorough and deliberative process in accordance with statute. That seems like a likely route to underperformance at best and a recipe for potential future failure at worst. And the second reason, and this is what I view as really one of values, is ask yourselves, do you seek to stand with communities, or do you wish to stand in for them and discard their work product? I ask that you respect both the process and outcome and approve the final proposal.
So, Susan, and then could have Richard. And then Richard from Callas.
Thank you. I'm Susan Clark. I live in Millsack, which is part of Washington Central SU. And I strongly support the WCSU board's unanimous decision not to pursue consolidation. Their decision was based on years of research and discussion and effort. Our communities have always gotten along well, but with our debt issues, consolidation would create inequity, getting town against town and neighbor against neighborhood. Professional pull revealed the many sophisticated reasons that our citizens strongly oppose consolidation, and those results are on the CSU website. I am very grateful that our boards spared us polarizing campaigns, which inevitably would have ended in failed proposals. Vermonters have a healthy tradition and cultural attitude for self-governance. And as you can hear from today's testimony, this passion isn't going away anytime soon, nor should we wish it away. For centuries, Vermonters' commitment to community has been at the heart of how we make sense of the world. In fact, it's this sense of connection and meaning, of personal ecstasy and civic responsibility that we so earnestly want to instill in our high school graduates. Make no mistake, to Vermont communities, forced merger is violence. It's violence to the democratic process, to communities, to rural schools, and students. And as with any act of violence, there will be consequences, lawsuits, shore, but also bitter repercussions that will likely endure for generations. The state board can do so much better. You can embrace our rural communities for their strengths and respect their willingness to partner in framing solutions, as they have in their proposals. So, I urge the board to respect WCSU's wise and well-founded decision. The last thing we should want is to add to the alienation and anger felt by rural communities. It's not good for anyone, especially for our kids.
We have Richard, and then Andrew Pond could be next.
Richard King from Callas, school board member. In good faith and with the interests of our children, our communities, our state, our very democracy in mind, our five towns, each, you know, each came together to address this issue. Engineers, attorney system, attorney generals, prominent lawyers, electronics and carpenter, electronics engineers, carpenters, farmers, to discuss, debate, and all of late and unanimously reject the preferred model, the ban, that we're talking about imposing down upon our district. The same group developed an alternative model, which will be, which will better serve our needs, after thousands of hours of combined effort to do this. I've been involved with this since the very beginning, and I, my background is in planning. I worked with Addison County as a senior transportation planner. Consolidation works for some communities. Geographically, it works. I know all of those communities, and yet still you see towns like Orwell that are really split by this. It does not work for all communities. There is not a one-size-fits-all. It has been proven in Maine and other states. And if we go down this path, we are going to see the same kind of division that has arisen there. What we need to do is do exactly like Susan said, and exactly like Kimberly Jessup said. You have to acknowledge the towns that have gone and done the due diligence. These are intelligent people. They are intelligent, as is anyone in the agency of education, who incidentally was generally absent from all of these processes, very occasionally we could see them present. And rarely was, was any of the feedback considered, unless it was to use, to plug, to basically force them farther into the shoot of consolidation. We, as a town of Callas, will fight this. We will, we will challenge it legally in court, and we will also, we're even considering click our own school closure and starting an independent school too, because we feel very strongly this is our.
Linda Palmer? So, Linda Palmer next, yes.
Thank you. My name's Amber Pond. I'm from Bolton. I'm also the chair of the Mount Mansfield Bonhilean School District School Board. Would like to thank you for recognizing Underhill Central's achievements earlier this morning. We have a highly functional school district, also led by the superintendent of the year. As you know, we merged a few years ago. We've been focused on students. We've offered, as was discussed earlier, elementary school choice within our district. We've started to offer our car for line of immersion program. And this year, we're going to consider repurposing one of our elementary schools. We have two towns that have three elementary schools. We're focused on students and achievement and equity. The supervisory union structure that we're still in is a distraction. It's not of benefit to students with multiple districts, Huntington Elementary being separate from the rest of the schools. They have different priorities. It's not allowed for the continuous progress of students. And it requires maintenance of this complicated governance structure, and there are costs associated with that. The first year that we kept track, the separate governance in Huntington School District cost about $20,000. Last year, it was $33,221. To best serve our students in Mount Mansfield, we must become a supervisory district. We have an existing board. We have articles of agreement. All we would need with the state board's recommendation would be a positive vote from the members of our passion of the town.
We have Linda, and then Dorothy from Callas.
I did not put my name on the wrong list.
Okay, that's okay. You don't have to get the seat. Okay, then Dan from Orwell. My name is Simon Chee, this is Simon Chee right up there. Sophie, you want to go ahead?
I'm Linda from Barnard, Linda Trains from Barnard, and I was on the AGS committee. I've also had kids in, oh, I've had kids in the school for fourteen straight years, so I know the elementary school very well. While I could sit here and tell you many wonderful things about my town of Barnard and its rival school and community, what I really want to talk about are the amazing humans that sat here today to defend their AGS proposals. Not only do these people know their communities and schools, but they know education in the state of Vermont and the laws that govern it. Act forty-six, act forty-nine, all the other older laws of act sixteen, act sixty-eight. They are volunteers who work their butts off to find a way to uphold their ideals while still following the law. Through my hard work, week in, week out, month in and month out, year in and year out, they have volunteered labor for long days, hours of reading, 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 talking, analyzing, gathering data, reading more, and then writing and writing again to find a way to do what they know is best for their schools. Some of them are on seven or six B committees before tackling the tremendous job of putting together an alternative government structures proposal. They have been multiple conferences, phone meetings, daily email correspondences, and many discussions with lawyers, as well as the residents of the towns they represent, not to mention the leaders in the Vermont Agency of Education, as various state legislatures, and many of you all. It is outrageous that the proposal, proposed state plan performed by the Agency of Education rejects so many of these fiercely crafted alternative governance proposals, proposals that were laboriously and meticulously put together to be accurate, advance-based documents. Meanwhile, most of all of last year's preferred merger proposals were waved right through with minimal scrutiny. It's as if the train must consolidate had already left the station and just a little bump, like a section of the state law requiring a fair AGS proposal evaluation was not going to get in its way. I ask you all to be careful and judicious, more careful and more judicious than the secretary proposed plan is. Please consider what is really right and what is really fair to the students and the towns these hardworking volunteers will represent.
We have Angus from Callas.
My name is Dan Redondo. I'm from Orwell. I have two kids in Orwell, a sixth grader and an eighth grader, and then I also have a freshman, or actually now a sophomore, in fairing. I think the, it boils down to, for our community, is that we voted three times. And what's critical about that third vote is that it was on a, on a plan that considered us as advisable, which created a mud. That plan was presented to you guys, and you guys approved it. And then we voted that down. The schools in the district then formed the mud, which was an approved plan. And now you are forcing us into, or proposing to force us into a merger with them on a plan that we rejected. Not once, not twice, but three times. If that doesn't sink in, what that is, the destruction of the democratic process, and absolute atrocity towards what people committed in terms of their time and energy into understanding the impacts and the proposed benefits. You asked earlier, what were the main concerns? Three of eighteen representatives. That is a substantial disadvantage. It is clear to anyone with paying attention to the democratic process that three of eighteen puts you at substantial risks for financial and educational cuts, or being outvoted for, for other aspects. It's critical that that three of eighteen be understood. So what I go back to is, is how we get to this spot, and, and the fact is that you guys are proposing to ignore our vote. The secretary's proposed plan considered that community sentiment. That is not community sentiment. That is, community sentiment is people going to a board and say, hey, can you vote on this amendment? Can you take this position? And then a member of the board saying, you know, I think we're going to vote differently. That's kind of the community sentiment. We took three legally binding votes. Is that clear? Thank you.
We have Angus from Callas. Okay, Angus, witness? Angus, no. Paul Stone has come Orwell, and then also up is Scott from Callas. So, next one. Did you sign up to be public?
No.
Okay. Is there another Scott from Callas?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We can guess.
Thank you for hearing us. My name is Paul Stone, I'm a Orwell citizen, of the town of Orwell. I have had four children attend the Orwell village school, and four grandchildren attend the village school, so I've been involved for a while. I would like to emphasize what Dan Redondo just said, in that the second article of agreement specifically said and stated in very detailed terms how mud would be formed, and how Orwell could opt out and be in that mud. And that's the way the town of Orwell voted, and I hope that the state board will respect that democratic decision to do that. Couple of other things I'd like to reiterate. The opportunity for townspeople to participate in the school with a smaller school board is much greater, and a small school is much greater. We now vote by show of hands or paper ballot at town meeting on our school budgets, and we have the opportunity to query school board members and teachers and principals and talk about what our priorities are. The school budget has passed in Orwell for the last forty-two years, as far as I can remember, without any problem, even though we are a rural town, doesn't have a lot of money, don't have any security or self-supportance. We will lose a small school grant if we stay in the mud, and I just think that's a criminal punishment for a small school. I just can't understand why the legislature would do that. The ski program is very important to us. Four or five years ago when we started that, the townspeople raised twelve thousand dollars to implement that program, and now it's funded by the inner school budget. It's an important program. All the students go, whether they participate in skiing or not. All but six last year participated, and I think it's a very important program. It's as important as all other sports, because it's a winner of time thing that you can do for the rest of your life, and it's taking advantage of the climate in Vermont. Thank you.
Scott, do we have, so Scott, I'm trying to be there, from Callas? No.
Scott Bassin?
Yes, that's what that last name is, yes. No? Okay.
Oh, I guess that is me.
That is you. All right.
This is a much better Scott.
All right, we'll come step up right here, please. On your way, is, is there also, do I see it, Sherry from Orwell?
Yes.
Okay, you can come up too, and just, just so we can try to get through more people, it's very helpful to be coming up. So Scott, you are first, and then Sherry, so we have two minutes.
You can force Callas to go into consolidation. Everything I've heard says you will. Don't you understand what you're doing to our school? You don't see the consequences. You force us into consolidation, that means the Callas school is closed. Understand that. In your hearts, understand what you're doing to Callas. Thank you.
Sherry, then Glenn from Orwell? Is there a Glenn?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I will, I speak very quickly, so I have enough to say here. Please let me introduce myself. My name is Sherry Young. I am a business owner, I'm a scientist, I'm a mother, I'm resident Orwell, and I did run a skiing program for the students of Orwell. I should add later here that I am a flatlander, that I do have two children who are ninth-generation Orwellians. I love the States, but I first cried for an entire year when I first moved to Orwell, because it's a very rural area, until my children started in the community school. I then found a wonderful opportunity for my children in this school. They know their neighbors, they partake in intergenerational opportunities within the school day. I volunteer hundreds of hours of my time, like many other volunteers at Orwell which are not paid for. I have found that I have wonderful opportunity for my children to have grateful opportunity to grow and fail in a supportive and socio-economic diverse community. I've been an active member of the act forty-six process, often attending meetings outside of my town, being the only person thirty minutes away, not even, no one represented from that town. I did what every good scientist would do, once I found out about act forty-six, I researched the ever-glowing daylights out of it. I called Maine, I spoke with superintendents, principals, teachers, Arkansas, Maine, DC, you name it, I know them. I found with all of my research, I had more and more clear vision that the consolidation of the small community school, my rural children of ten, would be negatively impacted. During the meeting two years ago, with many legislators that are in this room, I was assured that what happened in Maine would not happen in Vermont, where not Vermont, we would never have the big state. That is not true to this day. As I look at the Maine model, the only way to long-term economic stability means to close community schools, remove rural children from the communities who are nurturing and educating them. Where is the equity for rural children in that? Have you ever ridden the bus for more than an hour with fifty-plus kids? It's horrible, and I suggest you do it. Consolidation, and in certain communities, the big box store educational opportunities may seem like a good deal until there's nowhere left to shop, and the goods cannot be afforded. Thank you.
So Barrett, please.
I'm just going to be very sharp, and I'm speaking solely as a community member, if not anybody associated with the school. I think that act forty-six had some merit. I do feel that everybody feels that this is something that's got stuck in their throat. That being said, ultimately, I can accept whatever decision is made. It's not going to be the be-all, end-all. It's not going to end our school, but what I really think needs to happen is, there needs to be an end to this, so that our community can start to heal. It's been very divided, and we need to end that part. We need to think about the children, we need to find ways of challenging our students and taking them to the next level, because as things considered, continue to consolidate in the world, everything becomes global. We are not competing with the kids next door, we are competing with the kids from across the ocean, and that's us. We need to move forward, challenge our students, and get this stuff behind us. Thank you.
So we have, we have then Paula from Huntington.
I'm Lisa Bear, and I live in Huntington, and I fear that the merger train has left the station, but I'm asking this board to please reconsider. I'm here to talk about democracy. Huntington voted four times. And what is the point of voting if our votes are not listened to? The secretary's report, the vote plan, said community sentiment essentially is irrelevant. I am asking the board to correct that error. Mr. Carroll pointed out that this is about the children, not about the adults. Children learn from what they see happening around them. If they see their parents and their community voting four times not to merge, and what do they learn if the merger goes ahead? What they learn is that the people in power will ignore the will of the voters, and that is not a lesson that anybody on this board wants children to learn. This board has a chance to inject some democracy into this process, to inject some wisdom into the process. Is it wise to force citizens into a state district where they will not have a meaningful voice? Is it wise to ignore the will of the people as expressed in four separate elections? Is it wise to eliminate public participation by moving forward readings twenty-three lines from where the people live? In the name of democracy, I urge this board to reconsider and not force Huntington to merge.
Callas from Middlesex, and then we also have David Carpenter for Orwell, he could come up also, he's the next one.
Thank you. Hey. I'm Kyle Lanis Maranello, speaking in my personal capacity. I'm the parent of three wonderful children from me in Middlesex, they're here in the back. We live right across the street from the school. I passionately support keeping our local school boards, because that is always best for all the children in Washington County. That's not just my opinion, that's the unanimous opinion of all six of our school boards, and the opinion of all of our local representatives and senators. To understand how passionate we are about this, consider the following analogy. There are two paths leading out of this room. Imagine this path is flat, safe, and clear, and you get ten million dollars if you pick this path. Now look at the other path. Imagine warning signs, potables, brambles, barbed wire, live tigers, and not a dime of money. We spent three torturous years deciding which path. When we started, I had short hair. Instead of taking ten million and leisurely strolling down the easy lane, we picked the path with brambles, barbed wire, and live tigers, and it was every bit as brutal as it looked like it would be. We're battered, disheveled, and scarred, but we made the right choice. We know our towns, we surveyed our citizens, we talked to them, listened to them, we looked at our particular situation at this moment in time, and realized our district cannot merge, it will not work. This path is what is best for our kids. Do not pluck us away from this path and send us down the other path. We don't belong there. We chose against it even when offered ten million dollars. To force us there now with no incentives, without our consent, is unconscionable, and it won't work. We fought live tigers to get here, we intend to say.
Thank you. I don't have any live tiger stories. I'll try to make this as quick as I can. I see this as a conflict on how to respond to change. Either you succumb to fear or you exert leadership, and I would prefer Orwell exert leadership in this regard, and I hope you'll still have the opportunity to do so. Second, I've been on the Slate Valley Mud Board with those fifteen strangers that we're all talking about, and the collaboration's been great. They're smart folks, and looking for ways to improve the education of all the kids in the district, not just their own. I'd like to see us follow that beat as well. Third, the concerns that I've heard over and over are, quote, "loss of control" and "loss of community." I just don't see those. Closing the school is a fear for sure, but a greater fear should be short-sheeting the kids in Orwell, because we're missing out on opportunities. Fourth, I have questions about cutting the programs. I've heard questions about cutting programs at the school, but I haven't heard a lot about adding the programs, and I fear that Orwell is stagnating. The physical plan is substandard and needs a lot of work, and there are some issues as well that haven't necessarily been addressed in specifics here today. Fifth, I think that there are improvements to education across the board, and all the kids, we're all ending up with our neighbors' kids in Fairhaven. We should all be working as hard as we can to improve the education for all of us. And finally, I hear a lot about the divisions that this has caused, and the divisions that will leave. There's no question that there have been divisions, and I've had them with some people in this room, and I've had very good conversations, very productive conversations, but whether those divisions persist is on the parents, and those divisions will only persist if we let them. Thank you.
So, at this point, we are running behind, but we will adjourn at this point. So, at this point, we are running behind, but we will adjourn at this point. And just to give about half an hour or so. Oh, sorry, sorry, reset, sorry. Thanks for the attention, trying to do math at the same time. That's why I teach social studies. So. So we will, we will come back in half an hour. Reset, half an hour. I need to take a break.